Good evening. I'd like to call to order the city council meeting for the city of Wheatridge, Colorado for November 8th, 2021. If you would please stand as you were able and join me in the pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which its hands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Will the clerk please call the roll of the members?
Janice Hoppy.
Present.
Judy Hutchencey.
Present.
Zachary Urban.
Present.
Rachel Holteen.
Present.
Amanda Weaver.
Here.
Corey Stites.
Present.
Leah Dozeman.
Here.
Valerie Nussler-Bett.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, all eight members of council are present. We have a quorum.
Thank you very much. We have concluded the election for 2021 last Tuesday, and we have some new council members. And I would like to turn the program over now to our judge, Judge Randall, to swear in the new members in council.
All right, ready? Mayor Starke first. Okay. What about you, Eric? I pledge Starke.
I pledge Starke.
To solemnly and sincerely declare.
Solemnly and sincerely declare.
And affirm.
And affirm.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
And laws of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the state of Colorado.
And the state of Colorado.
And the charter and ordinances of the city.
And the charter and ordinances of the city.
And will strive to be responsive.
And will strive to be responsive.
To all citizens of the city.
All citizens of the city.
And will faithfully perform.
And will faithfully perform.
The duties of the office of the mayor.
The duties of the office of the mayor, which I am about to mention.
Which I am about to mention. Thank you. 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 I, Janice Hoppy.
I, Janice Hoppy.
Do solemnly and sincerely declare.
Do solemnly and sincerely declare.
And affirm.
And affirm.
That I will support the Constitution and laws.
That I will support the Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the state of Colorado.
And the state of Colorado.
And the charter and ordinances of the city.
And the charter and ordinances of the city.
And I will strive to be responsive.
And I will strive to be responsive.
To all citizens of the city.
To all citizens of the city.
And will faithfully perform the duties.
And will faithfully perform the duties.
Of the office of city council member.
Of the office of city council member.
District One.
District One.
Which I am about to.
Which I am about to. Which I am about to. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.[389.93]
Mr. Mayor, City Council members and city manager and guests. On behalf of all veterans within the city of Wheat Ridge, whether sworn or non-sworn, we graciously accept this proclamation. And this city is truly a wonderful place to work, especially for those of us veterans who get deployed. And our leaders and supervisors and managers all understand the sacrifice that's made. And then we appreciate those that stay behind, that sacrificed for us to make sure that the city and all other departments run without a hitch in their giddy up. So appreciate this. Thank you.
And I would like to ask Angel LaPierre to come forward to the podium to accept the Law Enforcement Records Personnel Appreciation Week proclamation. This is a proclamation for Law Enforcement Records Personnel Appreciation Week, November 8th through 12th, 2021. Whereas dedicated law enforcement records personnel serve the state of Colorado to provide communities with vital statistics services. And whereas law enforcement records personnel are crucial to assisting law enforcement agencies identify, pursue, capture, and process suspects. And whereas these professionals continually use their expertise and experience in maintaining criminal justice statistics and improving apprehension strategies. And whereas the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff law enforcement records is influenced by their positive attitude and understanding of the importance of the work they perform. And whereas law enforcement records personnel serving the state of Colorado exhibit professionalism, efficiency, and compassion during the performance of their essential duties every day. And whereas the city of Wheat Ridge is proud of the dedicated police department records professionals who respond to the needs of officers and detectives while also serving our community members with care and compassion during what for them is often a very difficult time. And whereas the state of Colorado has designated the second week in November to recognize law enforcement records personnel. Now therefore, I Bud Starker, Mayor of the city of Wheat Ridge, Colorado, do hereby proclaim November 8th, 2021 through November 12th, 2021 as Law Enforcement Records Personnel Appreciation Week. Bud Starker, Mayor.
Thank you. Just wanted to say thank you so much to Patrick and to all of you for having us here. Appreciate it. We get this from, gotten it from Governor Polis now, I think, three or four years in a row, and it's very cool that they recognize that we see a lot of things that the, and read about things that the officers see without kind of that training. And my team does a really amazing job of serving citizens of Wheat Ridge, and I'm very proud of them. And Division Chief Watanola is buying us breakfast burritos tomorrow, but the rest of the week is open, so if anybody wants to send us food, just let, you know. So, thank you.
Okay. We are now at our, we don't have approval of the minutes tonight because we don't have any minutes in our package, but approval of the agenda, if without any objection, we'll let the agenda stand as presented. Thank you. We are now at our public's right to speak. The public may speak on any matter not on the agenda for a maximum of three minutes under the public's right to speak. When I call your name, if you would please step to the podium, please give us your first name and your last name. If you would please spell your last name for the record and give us your address. You'll have three minutes to speak, and our clerk will be the timekeeper on that. So, yes. I have, first up to speak is Jerry DeTulio. Steve Dozeman has given him his time, so Mr. DeTulio, you'll have six minutes. And Tim Burnett is on deck.
Thank you, Jerry DeTulio, citizen and Jefferson County Treasurer. I live at 32nd and Newland. First of all, I wanted to thank Mr. Urban for all his support and service over the last eight years. I was at Amanda Weaver's victory party at Colorado Plus the other night, and my longtime friend and adversary, Kim Calamino, was there. And we've been on the opposite ends and on the same side of a few things. And I told Kim, I said, you know, Kim, that was really cool that you went up and thanked Vance, or Vance, Zach, I'm going way back now, Zach, on all the things that he's done for the city of Wheat Ridge to be on city council. And we laughed a lot because, you know, obviously, we agree, we probably disagree more. But I wanted to thank Mr. Urban for all of his support, his thoughtfulness on council, his eight years. I think you're almost as good as I. We never missed a meeting, regular meeting, so congratulations on that. And I appreciate all your work, and we'll go to lunch at Pietrus sometime again. So, thanks, Zach. I also wanted to acknowledge all the folks that got reelected, our Mayor Bud Starker, District One, Janice Hoppy, our former mayor pro temp, I think, Scott Ohm, our new guy. Congratulations. Looking forward to talking to you and working with you. And then also Leah Dozeman. I appreciate it. And last but not least, Councilmember Weaver, I wanted to mention that she had sponsored the Dead and Dying Tree Removal Program, which actually was funded by the city. You could actually apply for a matching grant to remove trees that are dead or dying on your private property. And in speaking with our Parks Director, we have had 30 applications so far this year, and it's closed right now because there's not enough money. But she did say that starting next year, there's a budget amendment of $60,000 in the budget, and that'll be opening again in the spring and probably in January. So 30 applications in probably just a couple of months has been awesome for the city of Wheat Ridge, for the city council for being proactive and thinking about it and making sure that our urban forest is taken care of. So I thank you, Councilmember Weaver. Congratulations. It was fun working on your campaign and look forward to doing it again in the future. So, the last thing I wanted to do was talk about Jefferson County Treasurer. Usually I'm up here talking about how money the county needs, more money, and we're working on ways of collecting property taxes. But tonight, I just wanted to mention that Jefferson County taxpayers who pay property tax in 2020, both residential and commercial, will soon receive a Tabor refund check in the mail as required by the state's taxpayer bill of rights of paper. The treasurer's office worked with county administration on preparing the checks, and the mail, checks should be mailed later this year, November. Here's our preliminary data on this money going out, just $1.5 million to be refunded by check. Approximately 212,000 checks will be mailed, totaling to 1.5 million. And of course, I signed every one of them individually with my lighter hat on and the thing on the roof. The average check unfortunately will be approximately $7 because it's being prorated. There is one, and the checks will range from $1 to $44,000. The $44,000 check is a property tax fare that business commercially paid around $8 million for property taxes. The cost of this mailing will be about $200,000. These are all rough numbers still, which is about 95 cents per envelope for the check. Our office will be cashing checks for taxpayers at $100 or less, but I can't cash a $44,000 check. If you have any questions, please call us at 303-271-8330. That's the Treasurer's Office of the county. And hopefully these checks will be mailed around November 23rd. I'll deliver yours personally to the office. Does anybody have any questions about the refund? It's the Tabor refund, that's for 2021. Thank you very much. Congratulations, everybody, and you've done a great job the last two, four years.
Thank you, Treasurer DeTulio. Our next speaker is Tim Burnett and Franklin Salazar on deck. And before you get going there, let me explain the lights to you. The green light will appear when the speaker commences speaking, and it flashes, it starts flashing when you have 30 seconds left. The yellow light comes on with 15 seconds. And when the red one comes on, if you'd conclude your remarks. And so please give us your first name, last name, spell your last name, and give us an address.
Hello, my name's Timothy Burnett, B-U-R-N-E-T-T, and I am at 6995 West 33rd Avenue in glorious Wheat Ridge. I love this town. I grew up here. So did my dad. I'm a third generation Wheat Ridge native. I was born at Lutheran Hospital in 1982. I had a great childhood here in Wheat Ridge. I graduated from my local high school, which was Jefferson in '01. Done with learning, I decided to start my hand in the construction business. Worked really hard as a laborer all the way up to where I am now. I'm a successful business owner of over 11 years. I've traveled the country, but I only feel like I'm in home in Wheat Ridge, particularly at my family home where I grew up, and so did my father. In 2016, I felt so fortunate to purchase the home at 6995 West 33rd Avenue, directly next to where my parents live and where I grew up. I immediately started to plan my dream house to raise my family in. The plan is an extensive remodel, so extensive, we toured the old house down to the foundation. Everything I'm doing here is being done top-notch. Solar features include a massive window facing south to let light in. The price is high, but worth it to live in the neighborhood I love. These solar features can take tens of years to pay off. I've worked so hard on this house, pouring all my dreams into everything I have here. I want to raise my three sons in this home. This is my version of the American dream, and I love it here. This all got turned upside down this last week. It all started with some work going on underground out front of my house. I began contacting Wheat Ridge to find out what was going on. Everyone I spoke with was unaware of what exactly was going on. I finally found out that Century Link is installing a 5G ultra-wideband tower in my front yard, technically an Easement. Easement radioactive frequencies at levels never seen before. Used for future technology, these will be for driving cars coming up later, self-driving cars. And let me tell you, this is a huge push going on right now across the country, not just in our state. In my case, it's Century Link, but other big providers are skirting around community laws in a lot of cases, even around building departments in some cases that I've been looking into. Many people have found these 5G towers in their front yards without being notified. Complaints from these include, but are not limited to, noise, the kind that keeps you up all night long when these are close to your home. Also, other things such as increased cancer risk, cellular stress, and genetic damage. I got very little information from Wheat Ridge until I spoke to Ken, the head of the Wheat Ridge Development. As of now, according to Ken, these big companies can come into our little town here, and they get to decide where these go. Based on our code, they can put them just about anywhere they want to in public areas. So anyways, this thing's going up in front of my solar window. There's nothing I can do to stop this radioactive from coming into my home. Although Ken did say that he would never want one of these in front of his house, he said he's obligated to let these big companies put these anywhere they want based on Wheat Ridge code, which would be fine, but anyways, Century Link's website describes these things as an autobahn, kind of a highway of information. I don't think these belong on residential streets. The only stop to this, according to Ken, is to amend the building code. Otherwise, these are going to be in your front yard and backyard next, keeping you awake all night long, and there's lots of other damage. Please look into it. I only hope that we, the residents, should have some say in where they go. There's no public comment for these at all. I need everyone to come together to support amending a code here, okay?
Thank you.
To make these only at major collector corners.
Mr. Burnett?
This will make these less intrusive and prevent people like myself in the future.
Mr. Burnett, your time has expired, so thank you very much. Franklin Salazar?
Hi, Franklin Salazar, S-A-L-A-Z-A-R, 6990 West 33rd Avenue. I have a couple of flyers to hand out that I want to confuse the public and get them to go.
If you'd hand them to the clerk, please.
Okay. There's a pair of them. Salazar, this relates to the general principle of where the commercial mobile radio service facilities, and in particular concerns the zoning code 266.582C, which is concerned distance, in which the zoning code says it must be spaced a minimum of, it cannot be closer than 1,000 feet from any given facility. And so if the facility that Tim's speaking about is at, is less than 1,000 feet from the intersection of Pierce, which is a collector, and 32nd, which is a minor arterial, is also less than 1,000 feet from Teller, which acts as a collector, a minor collector, and also 32nd, which is a main minor arterial, and is also less than 1,000 feet from 35th, which operates, according to three flags and everything else, as a minor collector, and once again, Pierce, which is a collector. And if you look at, so the problem is, is we have a hierarchy of uses where that location is less than 1,000 feet from intersection where they should be placed to begin with. Also, if we, if you look at the commercial, there are the hierarchies in the code with the spirit block, which in which if you place one on at Pierce and the commercial district is 38, at the bottom side of it, it would be over 1,000 feet from that commercial district to 35th and Pierce. So then if you drop down another 1,300 feet, it would go to the intersection. So the logical place to put it is at 38 and at 35th and Pierce, and at the intersection of Pierce and 35th. And then to cross over to Teller and 32nd, put one at that intersection, and then to go north on Teller Street, so around 36. That is for a rectangle that covers the area at over 1,000 feet. Those are the logical locations to put it. Then, or then we look at the interior, where you put it with less than over 1,000 feet, and the logical location is at Reed and 34th. That Reed and 34th has a telecommunications pole with power, telecommunications, everything. That's the intersection it should go. It should not go in the middle of a block, which is where they place it, which means that what zoning needs to, zoning right now, needs to provide better organization for the placement of the pole. Right now, what's happening is there isn't any, there isn't a hierarchy that's in place. Now, the planning does say, again, the permitting, that there should be provided a reason for any given location, but you can tell by from where they're placing that, that they did not take that into account. And so they coddled in front of our house without providing any kind of recommendation for why that should be done there, and that's incorrect.
Okay.
So the permitting process should not only be the final permitting for the facility, but it should be for coddling and all the way through.
Okay, thank you.
And so I'm asking that, even though the code is extensive, and I really appreciate the extensive code, otherwise, I love codes that give me total clarity. And this code, it gives a lot of clarity, but it doesn't give sufficient clarity.
Thank you.
It needs to provide sufficient clarity, and what I'm asking for you is to stop for, at that location, because it's a long location.
Okay.
And provide intelligently.
Thank you.
You'll provide sufficient clarity.
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, no, no, sir, I'm sorry. Are there any other, I don't have anyone else signed up to speak at this time. Is there anyone, anyone else here who has not signed up who would like to speak on this that hasn't spoken? Or is there anyone online who is raising their hand? If you're online, you can raise your hand to speak. But I don't see anyone, anyone else, so. Okay, if you, if you want to speak, please come to the podium and give us your name, and you'll have your name and address, and we'll have three minutes.
Yeah, my name's Tom Burnett, 6999 West 33rd. And it seems the tower we're talking about is in, right in the middle of a residential area. It seems like they should go like on a higher traffic area, not right in the middle of a residential. You wouldn't want to walk right out of your house and there's this giant hole. So that's all really I have to say. I think they should go, you know, like on a 44th or a 38th or Wadsworth or something like that.
Okay. Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who hasn't spoken tonight under citizens' right to speak? Please come forward.
I'm Casey Burnett, 6995 West 33rd Avenue, B-U-R-N-E-T-T. I just wanted to clarify that doing research, our understanding is that there needs to be a change, an amendment to the specific code that would allow the city to have more control about the placement of these towers. And we would just hope that we could have an initiation of changing this code. That's what we're hoping for. Otherwise, they're going to be showing up in any one of our front yards by our windows, and we just, we need more control over it. And I believe that the code will allow that if we can initiate a change in that amendment. And just another thing that I wanted to, it would be best if we could place a, stop work on this until there, because it seems like there's no clarity of what's going on, and we just need to kind of get out ahead of it. I think it should be a concern for all of our residents in our community. Thank you.
Is there anyone else tonight who would like to speak under public's right to speak? Either online or in person. Okay, seeing none, we will close our public's right to speak and go to the first item on our agenda. Ms. Hulteen, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce Resolution Number 54-2021, a resolution approving a major subdivision at 3900 through 3920 Uppam Street in the Residential 3 R3 Zone District, Case Number WS2102/Fox Hollow on Uppam, at issue. The applicant is requesting approval of a major subdivision on property located at 3900 to 3920 Uppam Street. The purpose of the request is to subdivide the existing two lots into six lots and a drainage tract.
Thank you. This is a public hearing on a resolution. It is quasi-judicial. I'm going to open the public hearing. If you intend to speak on this issue, by speaking, you agree to tell the truth as you understand it. Before we go to our presentation on this, I'd like to recognize our attorney, Mr. Dahl.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate the indulgence. On this particular item, Councilmember Scott Ohm was, as you all know, formerly a planning commission member and actually sat on the matter when it came to planning commission. And of course, as he was required to do, voted on that matter at planning commission. That establishes an official record that through no fault of his own, he has, he has made a judgment on this, on this matter. And as council will, will know, I regularly advise you that one of the reasons that you must step down is the rare case where there has been prejudgment of a case, and you've judged a case before you've seen the evidence. Here, there's no, there was no other way to do it because Mr. Ohm was in fact a planning commission member, and he was, he was doing his job and performing his public service and serving on the planning commission. Nevertheless, there's now an official record of his having made a decision on a case, and that would render him unable to really make an unbiased decision on the new record of the case that's about to be made in this hearing. And I've spoken with Councilmember Ohm about this and advised him that for this particular item, he should recuse himself, leave the dais. We'll call him when that, when this item is over with, and hopefully be the last time we'll have to excuse him, especially his very first meeting and very first item. But life is long, and there'll be a lot of items that he'll be able to participate in. And I wanted to make that record and say I've spoken with Councilmember Ohm to, to clarify for you so there's no confusion about why he needs to leave.
Okay, we have a question from Councilwoman Hoppy.
Mr. Dahl, thank you for that explanation. However, I feel that it's important that I challenge you on this real quickly because we had the situation with Amanda Weaver, and the advice at the time was that she must vote on that particular case. So it was, it was a very, it was a very contentious case. It was on Uppam. And, and your advice was that she, she must, as the charter says. Can I ask, do we need a recess for you to revisit the charter and revisit that opinion from the past?
Well, I don't, I don't completely remember that transaction, although I remember there was some, what I guess I would suggest is this, I'm familiar with the charter provision that says on all matters, unless you have a personal, private conflict of interest, you must vote. Here, of course, it's not a conflict of interest, it's, has there been prejudgment? What I guess I would suggest, if council would agree, is this, I can do a Q and A with Councilmember Ohm and question him about whether despite the fact that he's already participated in a case, he'd be able to render an impartial decision in this case and get an answer from him. The charter provision says you vote, if there's a conflict, the council members, remaining council members decide. So I would suggest we do two things. I can do the Q and A with Councilmember Ohm, get hopefully the answer that he'd be able to act in an unbiased fashion, and then ask for a motion to allow Councilmember Ohm to participate. On that motion, I'd ask him not to participate in that motion. If that's all right with you, let's do that.
And that's the process we did take with Councilwoman.
Let me do the Q and A then.
Let's proceed with the Q and A.
Thank you. Councilmember Ohm, is it true that you participated in review of this case as a planning commission member?
Yes.
And did you vote on that matter?
Yes.
You recognize, understand that, that there's to be a new record made tonight as a result of this public hearing on the same application, correct?
Correct.
Do you believe that based upon reviewing the new record that's about to be made, you would be able to make a fair and unbiased decision on the matter despite your original participation at planning commission?
Yes.
Thank you. With that, I'd ask for a motion, perhaps Councilmember Hoppy would make it, to permit and authorize Councilmember Ohm to participate in the deliberation and decision in this case despite his prior participation at planning commission.
Okay, I will ask for a motion.
I move to, I move to approve for the participation of Councilmember Ohm in the hearing of the Resolution 54-2021, which is a major subdivision of Uppam Street, and ask for his permission, or and ask for his participation.
Second? There's a motion and a second. Is there discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council?
And if Councilmember Ohm can show us abstaining, at one time, you're going to use the yellow button.
Mr. Mayor, the motion has passed by a vote of six in favor, one opposed, and one non-voting, Mr. Ohm.
Okay, then the motion carries, and Mr. Ohm is seated for this public hearing.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we will go, do we have a staff presentation on this item? Mr. Goff?
We do. Mr. Scott Cutler is here this evening.
Mr. Cutler, please proceed.
Thank you. I am Scott Cutler, planner with City Wheat Ridge Community Development Department. This is Case Number WS2102, which is a request for approval of a six-lot subdivision located in the R3 Zone District. And I would like to enter into the public records the contents of the case file, subdivision regulations, and the digital presentation. The properties within the city of Wheat Ridge, all appropriate notification and posting requirements have been met, and therefore, city council has jurisdiction to hear this This is a 2020 aerial view of the property, which is outlined in red, and it is about 1.3 acres in size. It's located on the east side of Uppam Street between 38th Avenue and 44th Avenue. Uppam Street in the area is residential with a mix of single-family to multifamily properties. And to the south and east is Stevens Elementary School property. West Metro Fire District is located to the south, to the southwest is an office building, and further south on Uppam Street is the West 38th, mixed-use buildings with apartments and retail spaces. And I do want to clarify for the record that this is not the property that was subject to the rezoning referendum several years ago. That property is actually a few to the north. The subject site is Zone Residential 3, as are all of the properties in this area and to the north on Uppam Street. R3 allows for a range of residential uses from single-family to townhomes and small apartments up to 12 units per acre. The mixed-use neighborhood zone is to the south and southeast, as are the vast majority of properties along. of properties along 38th Avenue. This zone allows residential, commercial, and civic uses. And the MUC Zone District is to the southwest and includes more intensive commercial and residential uses. Subdivision regulations are found in Article 4 of the zoning code, and a subdivision is a technical document that reconfigures lots, tracts, or parcels for sale or development. It removes, creates, or defines property lines, allows the city to evaluate their right-of-way, and it allows the city to evaluate civil construction documents. As a reminder, a subdivision plot does not affect the zoning or permitted uses on the property. It enables development already permitted by the current zoning. It also does not look at site or building design. For this project, building design and placement will be reviewed at time of building permit for compliance with the R3 development standards. The purpose of the request is to create six developable lots based on the R3 standards. The plat will dedicate 16 and 1/2 to 26 and 1/2 feet of right-of-way along Uppam Street to make room for public improvements, which will include a five-foot attached sidewalk, curb, gutter, and lighting. The reason for the large dedication is that the property line currently stretches to the middle of Uppam Street in some places, meaning that a large portion of the street is not actually city right-of-way. The plat also dedicates access, utility, and drainage easements, and a drainage tract. This is an excerpt of Page 2 from the plat document, which is exhibit 3 in the staff report. Uppam Street is to the west, and you can see the six lots, T-shaped central drive, and track A on the east. This is a zoomed-in view of the plat, showing more detail. The proposed private drive alleyway is shown in gray and will be located within a central utility, access, and maintenance easement. Each lot will have direct access to the alley which leads directly to Uppam Street. Lots 1 and 6 are located at the western portion of the site along Uppam and contain existing single-family homes which will be preserved. The drive will travel in between those two homes. Track A is located at the east of the site between it and the school property and is shown in blue. This tract will be used as an above-ground detention pond and landscaping area. Drainage will be conveyed to this pond area through the 10-foot drainage easements running along the north and south property lines. Staff has determined that each lot is developable under the R3 standards, which includes setbacks, lot coverage requirements, and onsite parking. Lots 1 and 6 will retain the existing homes but are still developable for the future. Lots 2 and 3 are eligible for single-family homes only, given their size. Lots 4 and 5, which are at the southeast area of the site and adjacent only to the school property, are eligible for a single-family home or duplex, given that their lot size is larger. Based on the size of the proposed lots, no multifamily, no multifamily development would be permitted within this subdivision, and for this reason, staff will review the proposed homes for each individual lot at time of building permit rather than an overall site plan. We sent the application on referral to outside agencies, including fire, water, and sanitation, and there are no concerns. We also completed an internal review, and there are no remaining comments on the plat. Both Planning Division and Engineering Division have found the plat to be approvable, and construction documents are currently under review. The construction documents will need to be approved before building permits can be issued. Before the hearing, the property was posted for 15 days and letters were sent to property owners within a 600-foot radius. Comments collected on Wheat Ridge Speaks would be reviewed by City Council and entered into the public record. And at its hearing on October 21st, Planning Commission recommended approval of the request. Ultimately, staff has concluded that the request meets the subdivision regulations and all agencies can serve the property. It will allow the development of the site as permitted by R3 to proceed. For those reasons, staff is recommending approval, and I'd be happy to answer your questions at this time. The applicant is also here, does not have a presentation, but is available as well. Thanks.
Thank you. Before we go to questions of council, I would like to open this up to the public for, for an opportunity to speak. I have no one signed up to speak on my sign-up sheet. If there's anyone here in the hall who's not signed the sign-up sheet but would like to speak on this item, now is your opportunity. You may come forward, and I will ask the clerk, is there anyone on our Zoom format, if you would like to speak on this item in our Zoom format? You may do so by raising your hand, and we will bring you into the meeting.
I see no one on the Zoom format, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, and I see no one in the, in the hall here wishing to speak on this item, so we will close our public's right to speak on this, and I will open this up to questions from council. Are there any questions from council on this item before I close the public hearing? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing, and Ms. Hulteen, a motion is in order.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve Resolution Number 54-2021, a resolution approving a major subdivision at 3900 and 3920 Uppam Street and Zoned Residential R3 for the following reasons. City Council has conducted a proper public hearing that meets all public notice requirements as required by Section 26 109 and 26 407 of the Code of Laws. The requested subdivision has been reviewed by the Planning Commission, which has forwarded its recommendation of approval. The subdivision plat has been found in compliance with Article 4 of Chapter 26 of the Code of Laws. All agencies can provide services to the property with improvements installed at the developer's expense, and with the following conditions. The applicant shall pay the required fees in lieu of parkland dedication at time of each building permit. The developer shall enter into a subdivision improvement with the city at the time of recordation of the subdivision plat.
Second. We have a motion and a second by Mr. Stites. Is there discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council?
Mr. Mayor, the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. We will move to Agenda Item Number 2. Ms. Hutchinson, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mayor. Council Bill Number 20-2021 in ordinance amending Chapter 26 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws concerning letter notice to property owners and occupants for development applications, case number ZO8-21-03. At issue, the city's zoning code has specific letter notice requirements for development applications, including for neighborhood meetings, comment periods, and in advance of public hearings. For most mailings, the code only requires that mailings are sent to property owners, which excludes other stakeholders and as renters or business tenants. This ordinance expands letter notice for development applications to include owner and occupants to provide more inclusive information sharing in the community.
Thank you. This is a, an ordinance on second reading. It is a public hearing. It is not quasi-judicial. I'm going to open the public hearing. And Mr. Goff, do we have a staff presentation on this item?
We do. Ms. Lauren Mickelak, our planning manager, is here this evening.
Okay, Ms. Mickelak.
Thank you. Good evening. So the ordinance you have seen tonight reflects the direction that you gave us at the August 9th study session. It's in keeping with our recent theme and your council goal of improving public information. You'll recall that over the last two years, we've made a number of efforts. We've rolled out Wheat Ridge Speaks. We've increased the letter notice for public hearings from 300 to 600 feet, as you heard, redesigned the signs. The purpose, sort of the sole purpose of this ordinance is, again, to expand notice to owners and occupants. As we described in the staff report, when we saw you in study session, we were talking about tenant notice. We modified the language just slightly because we really mean the occupant of any residential or commercial building, whether it's for pay or not. We will be purchasing data periodically to implement this change, and we have done that and tested the process, so we feel very confident in the process that we have. If approved, that process will start with any mailing initiated later this month. That's all I really have tonight by way of introduction. The Planning Commission did review this change at a hearing on September 16th and voted to recommend approval, a vote of 7-0. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Before we go to questions from council, I'd like to open this up to the public for, to speak on this item. If you would like to speak on Agenda Item Number 2, I have no one signed up to speak, but if you are here and would like to speak, you may do so now. I will ask our clerk if there's anyone online who is raising their hand that would like to speak. We can bring them.
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, then I don't see anyone here, so we'll close our public's right to speak on this item and open this up for questions from council. Before I close the public hearing, are there any questions from council? I'm going to close the public hearing, and Ms. Hutchinson, a motion is in order.
I move to approve Council Bill Number 20-2021 in ordinance amending Chapter 26 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws concerning letter notice to property owners and occupants for land use applications on second reading and that it take effect 15 days after final publication.
Second. We have a second by Ms. Hoppy. Is there discussion on the motion? Ms. Hoppy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just would like to say, I know that there have been some people that have asked, why would we also include occupants and in these notifications? And I, the, what I want to be really clear about is that our, to have a diverse voice in our community, that we should be able to include people who may just be renting, perhaps they're renting until they can find a place to purchase here, perhaps they're a long-term renter. Whatever their personal plans are is, is their business, but for them to be able to have a word in what's going to happen in, in their community around them is important. So I'm really glad that we, that Councilmember Stites supported me in bringing this forward to a study session, and here it is now in black and white, and I'll be supporting it.
Additional discussion on the motion, Ms. Hoppy, I mean, Ms. Hulteen, pardon me.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Similar to Councilmember Hoppy, I am really excited to see this moving forward. When I first moved to Wheat Ridge, I was a renter and was fortunate enough to be able to buy the house I was renting. And I feel like, you know, we really do want to hear from everyone. If someone can vote here and pay taxes here, then they should have a voice in what happens in their neighborhoods. So I'm just, I'm excited to see we're making so many strides to be more inclusive of everybody who lives here regardless of their status. So I'm looking forward to voting yes on this.
Thank you. Ms. Dozeman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to say, you know, even though I'm a lifelong resident of Wheat Ridge, I have been a renter in this community for my entire adult life. So I really appreciate this council, including my voice and the voices of other long-term renters in Wheat Ridge and our community, because, you know, we're just as dedicated and oftentimes, we want to get involved and stay involved in the community that we want to raise our children in. So, thank you.
Thank you. Additional discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council?
Mr. Mayor, the motion has passed unanimously.
Thank you. We will move to Agenda Item Number 3. Mr. Stites, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council Bill Number 21-2021 in ordinance approving the rezoning of property located at approximately 4051 Clear Creek Drive from planned commercial development, PCD, to planned mixed-use development, PMUD, case number WZ-21-04. At issue, the applicant is requesting approval of a zone change from planned commercial development, PCD, to planned mixed-use development, PMUD, with an outline development plan, ODP, for property located at approximately 4051 Clear Creek Drive. The request will add an additional planning area, Planning Area 9, to Clear Creek Crossing.
Thank you. This is an ordinance on first reading to set the date, time, and location for a public hearing. Mr. Stites, would you please give me a motion?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve Council Bill Number 20-2021 in ordinance approving the rezoning of property located at approximately 4051 Clear Creek Drive from planned commercial development, PCD, to planned mixed-use development, PMUD, on first reading. Order it published, public hearing set for Monday, December 13th, 2021, at 7:00 p.m. as a virtual meeting and in City Council chambers, if allowed to meet in person on that date per COVID-19 restrictions, and that it take effect 15 days after final publication.
Second.
We have a motion and a second by Ms. Dozeman. Will the clerk please poll the council?
Mr. Mayor, the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. We will go to Agenda Item Number 4. Ms. Weaver, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a motion to approve payment to Timo Mong with Etherworks LLC in the amount of $185,000 for his public art piece entitled "Agrarian Calling" to be installed at the Clear Creek Crossing site. The, oop. Sorry, I'm going to read a little bit more. The Clear Creek Crossing site development includes a public art project. The process for selecting public art is defined in the Public Art Management Plan. Per this process, a public art piece entitled "Agrarian Crossing" by artist Timo Mong has been commissioned. Mong's proposal was selected by an appointed committee for recommendation to the Cultural Commission. The commission then makes a recommendation to City Council for acceptance and purchase. Purchase price of $185,000 includes design, construction, installation, and documentation.
Thank you. Mr. Goff, do we have any further staff presentation?
We do. We have a quick presentation this evening. We're excited this evening. We put the public art program in place numerous years ago, but it's really starting to come to fruition with additional funding and projects across the city. So Karen Van Erk has been managing this program, and we have a consultant here this evening that, I'm sorry. What did I say? Karen Venner? Karen O'Donnell. That's a blast from the past. I'm sorry. That was several years, okay. Karen O'Donnell, I'm sorry, Karen. Our Parks and Direct Manager is here, and she'll introduce our consultant.
I'm glad I'm not the only one.
Good evening, Mayor and members of council. I'm Karen O'Donnell, the Director of Parks and Recreation for the city. And Councilwoman Weaver just gave a nice description of why we're here this evening, and I just wanted to remind you that the Public Art Management Plan, which is what we follow in this process, was adopted by City Council in 2002, and the Public Art Fund, which funds, well, that's where we house the funds for these projects, is, was established in 2010. And I just wanted to introduce our presenter this evening. Kendall Peterson is our consultant for our public art projects, which include this Clear Creek Crossing project, Wadsworth Widening, that project, public art will come next, and then we have the Green at 38th and the Ward TOD project as well. So I'm excited to have Kendall with There Squared on board. She's done an excellent job thus far, and she's going to tell you a little bit about this process and the art that we have for you this evening.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Thanks for inviting me. Hopefully, this won't be too, this will be fun for everybody. So I just have a short presentation. This is similar to the presentation that I gave to, oh, I'm using the wrong button, to the Cultural Council a couple of weeks ago. So I think all of you know about Clear Creek Crossing. I'm not going to beleaguer you with all the information that you already know, but we are doing artwork there. And we, we, I'll go into the process a little bit longer, but we, it's a really exciting place to put public art because it's a brand-new development and it's pretty much a clean slate at this point. So we got together and discussed locations, discussed the development, and making sure that the art is consistent with the guidelines of the, of the development. So this is just the map of where we are looking at. If you see, there's a little star at the bottom. This is all kind of flip-flop so that it's, that's actually north. But we were looking primarily at this trailhead area. It's an area that would be a great kind of meeting spot for people who live in the multifamily residences there, but also for people who are working and taking walks during lunch, that kind of thing. So we're hoping that this is an area that will both attract some people to go outside but also be a marker for people going down the, the trails. There's just a, I think that's an old picture. This is, we're, you're beyond this at this point. This is a, just a picture of the downtown, sort of the, the area, the commercial area that'll be developed. We did have other areas that were open to artists to propose for, so you'll see that some artists did propose for some of these areas. So as Karen mentioned, we have a budget of $185,000. It's all-inclusive. That includes, as we mentioned, soup to nuts. The artists will receive that contract and they have to do, they have milestone payments throughout so that they hit, they hit certain targets, and it includes their contingency as well. So we had a seven, a seven-person art selection committee. We met, this is sort of a, a discussion of the criteria that we established from, from the outset. We wanted to make sure that the artwork was predominantly cited in areas that were accessible to all. We wanted to make sure that it's maintenance, virtually maintenance-free, nothing is maintenance-free in, in our world, but, but they would be maintenance-friendly. We wanted to make sure that we were observing the design guidelines that have been set out for the development, that we looked at the Village Center, and then we also looked at the trailhead, as I mentioned. And "modern agrarian" was the words that we would put out to the artists. Artists often glom onto certain types of words when they're creating their proposals, and they, they were able to kind of review it in their own way. And we wanted to make sure that we're using materials that will that we're using materials that will be complementary to the natural area near the trailhead. So this was our group. Megan was our cultural commission representative. We had all, this is the rest of the group, and Councilwoman Weaver was also in our group, and she can speak to some of the process that we had. And Ken was also a part of our group. So we've got quite a few reps here. So this is just the timeline that we had. We had an initial meeting on 4/15/21. I sent out a request for qualifications. We use this group, this website called CAFE, which is sort of the industry standard for public art. We received a number of applicants via that website, and then we allowed all of the seven group members to sort of prejudge everything, so that we came to the meeting and we were able to sort of narrow it down to five semifinalists. So we met, so those semifinalists were given the criteria, and they produced, they came to visit the site, all five of them. They're all local Colorado artists, and we wanted to make sure that they made a connection with the site, were able to visit it, and best understand what the parameters of the site were. Because obviously, this is a site that's huge. It's a huge, enormous site, so they had to take into consideration scale, materials, natural environment, that kind of thing. So we met, and we, each of the artists were given 30 minutes to give us a presentation in person, which was nice. And then we made a decision, and I'll go through the presentations very briefly. So Timo Mung was our artist that was decided upon as the winning artist. His piece is pictured here. He only provided drawings that were pencil drawings, which was really kind of refreshing. And he calls this piece Agrarian Calling. So it's obviously in the shape of kind of a rain silo, and he was looking, this guy came to the site, he went up on the canyons, and went up on the mesas, and took pictures of everything, and really considered it carefully. This piece would be consistent, consist of these, these chimes, I guess is what you would say. They're kind of wind-activated. I know I've had a lot of questions about how they will sound, and will it be too loud, that kind of thing. We will do some engineering on it, and he, actually, those chimes don't actually go all the way from the top to the bottom. So they will be engineered so that the sound will only be kind of within a 50-yard radius, that kind of thing. It's a simple design. It's robust. It's virtually maintenance-free. We don't have any issues with that. The base is just, it's made to look like it has a door in it. It doesn't actually have a door in it. And this artist was really interested in this element of sound, and we really appreciated that in terms of the ADA capabilities. So people who are sight-impaired can actually hear the sculpture. And then it also has this really interesting sort of maze at the bottom, and it kind of invites contemplation and sort of walking around the sculpture, sort of so we can see it being a great meeting place. We also heard presentation from Patrick Merrill. He is a native Wheat Ridge farmer. He grew up here and went to high school here. He's a local artist as well. This piece was based on ripples, ripples in the water because of the Clear Creek. He would propose stainless steel with these ripple sort of, it's a canopy, but not really a shade structure. And then it would have Corten steel in the base. People really appreciated this one, thinking it was very elegant, but I think in the end preferred Timo's piece because of that sort of agrarian feel. Other artists we interviewed were Kevin Schaefer. This was Vessels of Harvest. He specializes in these hand-forged sort of natural-looking weeds and flowers and that kind of thing. And he would group them in a bundle, like a harvest basket. One of the issues with this that the panel saw was the possibility of making this a huge climbing hazard, and he didn't really have an answer for that, which was a little disappointing. But it also included seating and areas to sit and contemplate the artwork. Mary Williams was inspired by hay bales. She proposed a number of different places, one being, the top one being in the city center. This would be made of metal and plexiglass and lit from inside. And then the one on the lower portion is a piece that you could actually ride your bike through on one of the paths going up, one of the bike paths. People appreciated this in terms of the whimsy and the color, but I think that ultimately, Timo's piece was more favorite. And then finally, we interviewed Andy Dufford, another local artist, Chavo Studio. You've seen his work around the city in multiple places. Unfortunately, Andy and his team did not really propose anything very specific. It was more sort of a sense of, a concept, that it didn't really have a specific piece that was proposed. And he had hoped for the idea of spreading the artwork throughout the development, so it would have educational pieces and shade structures and these meeting areas. So I think it kind of confused the group a little bit. They were sort of hoping for something a little more solid for the $185,000. And I invite Ken and anybody else who wants to give updates to, if I'm misspeaking in any way. But, so by unanimous consent, Timo Mung was our selected artist. I think people appreciated that it was maintenance-friendly, that it was simple and elegant, and that it had the look of a grain silo that would be very large, 54 feet high, 52 feet high. And so it would be something that would be kind of a beacon for the area, and also a meeting place ultimately. They loved, the group loved the element of sound and the idea that this could become a meeting place and a place to sort of gather near the creek. What was really interesting was the runner-up artist, Patrick Merrill, was selected. People really loved his work, and it came up from Christine McRight from Evergreen, the developer, that they are looking for possible artwork in front of the SCL Health Building, that they have a very elegant design, that the architecture is very interesting and contemporary. So the thought was that perhaps Patrick Merrill's piece might be selected to do something on the plazas in front of the SCL Health. So we're going to try and get that through too, but again, it's up to SCL to make that decision ultimately. But I thought it'd be really cool to have two pieces at that new development. So this is the final tally. The total budget was $190,000. We had some expenses for the artists. All artists are paid an honorarium to do their proposals, and then the contract would be for $185,000 flat. And then, this is our recommendation from staff and the consultancies, that he is recommended to move forward with the contract, and I will manage that for the city on behalf of the city. Any questions?
Before we go to questions from council, let me open this up to the public. If you, I don't have anyone signed up to speak on this item, but if you have not signed up but would like to speak, now is your opportunity. For anyone in the hall, or if we have anyone on the Zoom format, raising their hands.
There is not.
And I don't believe we do. And I don't see anyone coming, so we will close our public's comment on this and open this up for questions from council. Anybody have any questions? Ms. Hulteen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't really have any questions. I'm just really excited to see such high-caliber proposals coming in. I know Patrick Merrill's a very accomplished artist, and just, I actually, I think I knew, I know his wife, and I did know that he is from Wheat Ridge. But it's just, it's exciting to see that we're getting this, and we can be picky, and that the artists are demonstrating that they understand who we are as a city. And so I'm excited for this, and I'm glad to hear there's other projects coming down the road. More art, more better. So yay, just a big yay.
It's very exciting for you all. I agree with you on that. It's exciting for Wheat Ridge and to have all these projects coming down the pipeline.
Ms. Weaver?
Sorry.
I've got a couple of questions, though.
Sure.
It looks like we have a labyrinth down there. It's very nice. Do you know what the paving character of the ground is, and how the labyrinth would be, how you would discern the labyrinth?
We don't know that yet.
Okay.
So basically, what he had talked about was making that so that it might be crusher fines. The idea is that if you are disabled in a wheelchair or using a cane, that you would easily be able to walk through the labyrinth. There may be a need for some sort of pavers on some sides. It's really going to come down to materials and costs. That is another issue for public art right now. Steel costs are going up and up. And he bid this out at this time, and that was one of the things that the cultural council felt very strongly about, is that we have to make sure that we're not going to value-engineer it down to like a tiny little rain silo. We want to make sure that we get the effect of that. So all of that will be worked out. So this is just an initial proposal, and then we will make sure that we get exactly what we want. And if it varies a lot from what he's proposed, we'll have to come back through this body and re-approve it.
Okay.
If there's any striking changes.
One of the other questions I had was, it looks like the base element is going to be somewhere in the order of 20 feet in diameter.
Correct.
Is that envisioned as a solid mass, or?
Most likely. It might be hollow on the inside, but most likely, it'll be a solid mass. And he's a contractor, so he's doing it as some sort of patterned concrete, and it could come in a bunch of different, it might be rock pattern, or it might be wood pattern, but it's most likely a compressed concrete construction.
Okay. The only, and the only issue that, you know, as a builder, I look at it, and I say, well, if it's sort of a flat, or more of a flat roof than not a flat roof, and we've got a hollow structure, we want to make sure that we don't have any water intrusion into that feature.
I have a feeling we're going to have to build it. And this is all pre-engineered.
Exactly.
Everything will be engineered fully. We'll probably have to do it solid on the top so that snow can weep off. But yeah, we'll have to work through all of that together.
Very good. Mr. Ohm?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One question, is there going to be any lighting, like accent lighting?
I don't, I don't think there probably is a budget for lighting out there, because we probably have to put conduit and make sure that it goes out that far. Right now, it's not budgeted, but I don't, most likely, no. And I don't know if there's a desire for lighting, you know, I'm happy to entertain that. We would probably have to figure out other budget for that. It's not included in this budget.
Additional questions? Ms. Hulteen?
To Mr. Ohm's question, would we be able to get conduit there without actually getting the lighting there, should we decide later to get, to provide light? Because it seems to me like the lighting would actually be somewhat expensive, but now's the time if we wanted to get conduit there for something in the future.
Yeah.
Sorry.
I'm sorry. I was just going to say, yeah, we'll look into what it would cost to do all conduit and lighting, because I think that's a good point, to have additional lighting, even if it's above the budget. We can bring back that to council to see if, depending on what it costs, if council would like to fund that out of the general fund.
Yeah, and there's a lot of moving parts right now in that whole area. It's, you know, because the trailhead was in one area, and now it's extended even further up. So I think we'll be landing on an actual space for it probably in the next couple months, and then we'll have to kind of review whether or not that's feasible.
Okay. Additional questions? Okay. Thank you very much. Great presentation.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Then Ms. Weaver, pardon me, a motion is in order.
I move to approve payment to Timo Mung with Etherworks LLC in the amount of $185,000 for his public art piece entitled Agrarian Calling to be installed at the Clear Creek Crossing site.
Second.
We have a motion and a second by Mr. Stites. Is there discussion on the motion? Ms. Weaver?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to comment that this was the first time I've ever participated in this kind of process, and it was really amazing to have people with your leadership. It was just really fantastic, and a very neat process of going through, starting with, what, how many? 30?
I think we have 40, yeah, 38 artists have been coming in.
Yeah. And it was just a great discussion, and I actually was able to check in with a couple of the participants after the final meeting. And everyone in the meeting, all the public participants, really felt great about the process and were very excited about this piece. So I just wanted to thank you and thank the city and Ken for their participation. I just think it was a great process. Thanks.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council?
The motion has passed unanimously, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. We will go now to agenda item number five. Ms. Nosler Beck, would you please introduce this item?
Thanks, Mayor. Resolution Number 55-2021, a resolution adopting the Jefferson County Multi-Hazard Mitigation Plan 2021 update. At issue, the Federal Disaster Mitigation Act of 2000 requires an adopted natural hazard mitigation plan to be updated every five years as a condition of future funding for mitigation projects under Federal Emergency Management Agency, FEMA, pre- and post-disaster mitigation grant programs. Therefore, the 2021 update of the Jefferson County Multi-Hazard Mitigation Plan needs to be adopted by council to replace the 2016 version.
Thank you. This will be a resolution of the council. Mr. Goff, do we have a staff presentation on this item?
We don't this evening. We gave an extensive presentation at study session, but Mark Westberg is available on Zoom if you have any questions.
Okay. Before we go to any questions of council, I will go to the public. I don't have anyone signed up to speak on this, but is there anyone here or anyone online who would like to speak? Now is your opportunity to do so.
I see no hands raised.
And we have no hands raised online, so we will close our public's right to speak on this item, and go to any questions that council may have for staff. Ms. Hoppe?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have a technical question, if we should, I don't know what's showing on Zoom right now. I know what's showing on our screen, but thank you, Karen. That's what I was asking.
Well, it looks like a bear to me.
Is that Mark?
Yeah. Zoom's still up. Yeah, it's still up, just not on the screen.
Okay. Any, any further questions? May I have a motion on this item, Ms. Nosler Beck?
I move to approve Resolution Number 55-2021, a resolution adopting the Jefferson County Multi-Hazard Mitigation Plan 2021 update.
Second.
Let's see, we have a motion and a second by, who's the second? Ms. Hutchinson? Thank you. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will clerk please poll the council?
The motion has passed unanimously, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. We will now move to agenda item number six. This is a motion to elect the mayor pro tem. This will be a motion, and let me tell you what sort of the procedure is on this, is each year, the city council members elect by majority vote a mayor pro tem who serves until their successor is elected. The election is conducted in accordance with Section 3, Print B of the City Council Rules of Order and Procedure as follows. One, at the first or second regular meeting in November of each year, the council shall elect a mayor pro tem who shall serve until their successor is elected. The procedure is as follows. The chair will announce the floor is open for nominations for the position of mayor pro tem. Nominations will be taken from the council members by voice. No second is required. Each nomination, each nominee will have the opportunity to address the council. And a motion and a second is then in order to elect one of the nominees to the position of mayor pro tem. If the motion does not carry it, additional motions are in order until a mayor pro tem is elected by a majority of the council president, president. Excuse me. So I will open the floor for nominations, are there nominations? Ms. Hoppe?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to nominate Rachel Hulteen for mayor pro tem.
Okay. Thank you. Are there further nominations for this, for mayor pro tem? Okay, then we have one nominee. A second is not needed. Would the nominee like to address the council?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Councilmember Hoppe. I am delighted and honored to be nominated to be the mayor pro tem. I just am really excited about this council and where we are as a city. And, you know, Janice, you've been an absolutely fantastic mayor pro tem, and don't even hope to begin to keep pace with what you've been able to do. But I am looking forward to working with my peers and the mayor and city staff to ensure that our city continues to move forward and address the issues that we have, and really embrace the opportunities that are before us. we have and really embrace the opportunities that are before us. So I appreciate the nomination. Thank you.
Thank you. Then I will ask for a formal motion. Ms. Hobby.
Mr. Mayor, I move to elect Rachel Hulteen as mayor pro tem effective immediately, term to expire upon election of their successor.
Second. There's a second by Mr. Stites. Is there discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council?
Mr. Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem Hulteen has been elected unanimously.
Well, thank you very much. Congratulations, Councilwoman Hulteen. Okay. We will go then to agenda item number seven. Ms. Dozeman, would you please introduce this?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Motion to approve memorandum of understanding and other required documents pertaining to opioid settlements. At issue, council is asked to approve the agreements needed to allow the city to receive funds made available from the National Opioid Litigation Class Action suits.
This will be a motion to the council. Mr. Goff, do we have a staff presentation on this?
We do, a brief one. If council remembers back in 2018, we, we came to you in study session to discuss the national opioid litigation that was, was happening. It's in the news every day now, so a lot has changed since 2018. But we were approached by the law firm of Spites in, in Warwick. They were working with co-council of Motley Rice, who is managing the national litigation. And we did sign on to that lawsuit as a city, along with Lakewood and, and many other communities. And as I mentioned, a lot of things have changed. There's been some settlements and the state attorney, attorneys general have been negotiating settlements by state. And Colorado has done that. Our law firm of Spites in Warwick have withdrawn themselves from the case, so we are now represented under the state settlement. So this, they are asking for the city's concurrence with the settlement plans. And I'll turn it over to Mr. Dahl, and he can speak about that portion.
Thanks very much. The materials in the packet, the most useful probably are the FAQ, the FAQ memo and the memo from the Attorney General's office that does a good job of describing a complicated, not only a set of complicated cases, but kind of a complicated, now what do we do with the money? And how does it get allocated and under what, what terms? And I should point out that both CML and CCI for the cities and the counties were involved with the AG's office and putting that together. And I think they did a good job in a complicated arena. The IGA that is, or excuse me, the MOU, which is like an intergovernmental agreement that, that really drives this, governs both the, the means of distribution in terms of the percentages that you see in some of the exhibits and the uses of the funds. And I think the uses of the funds probably are the most important thing. And when all is said and done, it's, well, this money should be spent to really address the opioid crisis. And, and on the ground, what are the actual uses of that, those funds? You'll see that the permissible uses are really pretty extensive. And, and so I'm, I'm hoping that when the city receives its share, that you'll have that panel plea of things to choose from. Importantly, the way the settlement was structured, they're encouraging local governments to sign off because when they get to 95% participating local governments, that triggers incentive payments, meaning it triggers more money from the, from the manufacturers. And you can understand why that is. If the manufacturers are still exposed, really to those who don't sign off on settlements and releases, because part of the package will be a release that would be signed by, by the city. To the extent that people don't sign off, then their exposure remains. To the extent that more and more local governments sign off, then that reduces their exposure and increases their willingness to pay money into the fund. That's why there's this 95% number that the AG's office, CCI and CML are all encouraging local governments to, to sign up. The payments themselves, you'll notice there is a breakdown in one of the materials. I think it's in the FAQ document. 10% of the money would go directly to the state for state projects. 20% directly to local governments that sign these releases, and that would include the city of Wheat Ridge. 60% to regions that then spend the money regionally and the, the city of Wheat Ridge is in a region. And so would be able to receive money indirectly through those, through the region. Then there's 10% to some statewide projects. It's, it's, I think, a very good outcome for the city and the state, and I, I recommend it and be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. Before we go to questions of council, I will open this up to the public. Is there anyone? I have no one that has signed up to speak, but if there's anyone here who has not signed up who would like to speak, you may do so now. You should come forward to the podium. And I will ask if there's anyone online who has raised their hand or would like to raise their hand and speak on this issue. They may do that now also.
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. And I don't see anyone wishing to speak here, so we will go, close our public comment section of this item and go to any questions of council. And Ms. Nosler Beck.
I just wanted to make a comment that at this year's CML conference, I attended a deeper dive into this and how this is going to be distributed. And it's, it's just a really great opportunity for our community, which is a smaller population, to receive some much-needed benefits because this crisis has impacted our community. I think, population-wise, I think more than some of the other communities. I don't have the data to back that up, but it's just what I see amongst family and friends. So anyway, just wanted to say this is something that I'm, I'm really hoping we all choose to support.
Thank you. Ms. Hutchinson.
Thank you, Mayor. I am just wondering, how do we know where the money is going? Do we get updates or of how it's being spent?
Sure. Yeah, I'll start a little bit, Ms. Hutchinson. First of all, we don't, we're not sure how much money Wheat Ridge is actually going to receive yet. There's still settlements to be had out there with, with the different companies. There, there's been one settlement at this point, and the Wheat, Wheat Ridge's portion is anticipated to be about $14,000 a year over 18 years. So not a lot of money. Well, probably, we will come back to council in the future once we have more information on how much money is, is going to be received by the region, by the state and by Wheat Ridge, and discuss how council would like to see those monies spent. We're, we're encouraged to spend those regionally and to work with Jefferson County to maybe compile all the funds so that there's a more regional approach to opioid impacts on our community. We can't do much with $14,000 as a city. So right now, we don't know, but as Mr. Dahl said, the, the MOU and, and the negotiations and the settlements lay out exactly how the money can be spent and it has to be spent on impacts caused by the opiate addiction issues. So, you know, I, some examples that I see regionally would be our funding of the Jefferson Center, what we used to call the Detox Center. It's the crisis center, they call it now. So any, any, a lot of services provided by Jefferson Center for mental health. They provide a lot of addiction services. The county health and human services provide services that address these issues too. So those are the things I see the money being spent on.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Hobby.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Goff, would, is it, is it specific, is it specific to, to drug addiction services or, you know, mental health and addiction go hand in hand? So could, would it be available to spend on mental health services? Or, or does it have to be specifically around drug treatment?
You know, I, I, I'm sorry, I don't have the specifics on what the exact criteria is on, but I'm sure there's going to be some crossover with mental health. But when we have more information, we can bring that back to you on exactly what that's going to be.
Thank you.
Additional questions? Okay. Seeing none, we will ask for a motion. Ms. Dozeman.
I move to approve the memorandum of understanding and other required documents pertaining to opioid settlements. Second.
We have a motion and a second by Mr. Stites. Got a lot going on tonight. Is there discussion on the motion? Ms. Hobby.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I look forward to seeing what types of things that we can spend these monies on. And while $14,000, it seemed like a lot of money, I've also found out that our, our very own high school doesn't even have a, a mental health therapist there because they don't have the funding. And so things like that, or with our co-responding programs, I think that we have plenty of things in our community that, that we could spend the money on. I do understand that combining it with the county allows for more bang for your buck, but it would be really nice if we could directly infuse that into our community.
Any additional discussion on the motion? Okay. Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council?
Mr. Mayor, the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. That concludes our regular agenda items. We will now go to city managers' matters. Mr. Goff.
Thank you, Mayor. And council, I have a few items, and then I'm sure council has a lot of questions about the public comment we received earlier. So Ken Johnstone stuck around for that, and Mr. Dahl can speak to it too. But I'm going to ask them after my comments to provide an update on, on the small cell tower placements in the community. But some good news that you may have seen in the press over the last couple of weeks, our Gold Center is continuing, on 26th and Kipling is continuing to build out and very excited about that. Colorado is going to have its first brew pub bowling alley. So we're excited. The Joy Ride Brewery out of Edgewater is, one of the owners of that is splintering off and opening up their own brewery and reopening the bowling alley. So we're excited about that. And there's, the other expansion continues at the Gold Center. So in a related note, the Wheat Ridge Urban and New Authority issued, sold their bonds in the last week, and they close tomorrow. So $42 million worth of bonds were issued, and we'll receive those monies tomorrow. And some of that money is going to help the redevelopment of the Gold Center, so we're excited about that. And also, Long speak Metropolitan District or Evergreen for the Clear Creek Crossing Development, they're, they're working on issuing their bonds. They hope to have those issued by the end of this year. And they believe, I think it's about 52 million that they're issuing, and it, there'll be enough money to reimburse the city of about 10, 10 and a half million dollars for the Hill Grant project on I-70 and the environmental assessment work that was done for that project. So we may have an additional 10.5 in our budget by the end of the year. If that moves forward, okay. So with that, Ken, do you want to open up, start with the introduction on the, the small cell tower?
Yeah, thanks, Patrick. Yeah, if council would humor me, I'd maybe give a little bit of background in terms of the regulatory environment at both the federal, state and local level. As Mr. Dahl and I are both well aware, the federal government has taken a pretty active role in regulating telecommunications facilities, starting in, I believe it was 1996, with the passage of the Telecommunications Act that limits and, you know, regulates the, the manner in which local jurisdictions can authorize and allow, frankly, cellular towers of various shapes and forms and sizes. I, I bring that up as, for context, just to kind of set the stage for the fact that they've, they've continued to take an active role. And most recently, to fast forward to the last couple of years, the FCC got involved in rulemaking, as well as our state legislature, in, in, in regulating this new kind of aspect of the industry, which is generally associated with what are called 5G facilities. And it's a more kind of granular level of installation in terms of how that technology works and the need to have these more localized, smaller facilities that I'm sure you've all seen. And it is, is not been without some level of controversy. I know they started popping up at a, in a neighborhood scale in Denver. Got the attention of our state house. And I would say that the, the industry is fairly successful and, and has been for many years. And importantly, I think lobbying those legislative bodies of the importance of telecommunications for all of our daily lives, for public safety, et cetera. And so the state legislature did also make some regulation that frankly limit the, the manner in which we can regulate small cell facilities. They did, however, to their credit, from our perspective, give a, kind of a, a band of, of local control whereby we could adopt local land use regulations. We've updated our land use regulations as it pertains to telecommunications facilities on a fairly regular basis and, and sometimes in response to the feds or the state changing the rules of how we can regulate things, often related to timing issues and making sure that these facilities are reviewed in a timely fashion. But at the state house, they did give us a bandwidth to be able to provide some local control, and we immediately took them up on that. And this council, or at least for most of you, adopted an update to that section of chapter 26 that relates to commercial mobile radio services and added a section specific to small cell. We think it's a fairly comprehensive, but still, you know, by definition and by state and federal law, has to be fairly permissive, but creates a regulatory framework whereby if there's an application for a small cell facility, first conversation they has to, have to have is with the, the zoning department, community development, to look at kind of the location. They have to justify the location from a network provision standpoint, so they have to tell us a story of why they're proposing to go in a given location. It's often a network, so they'll often come in with, you know, three or four that are going to work kind of together to form a network for one of those providers. The second, so that's the first step, is they have to really explain to us why they're proposing in, in certain locations, and we can have an influence on that. The previous speaker was correct, there is a thousand-foot separation requirement specific to small cells as well. So that was accurate, accurately described. The second kind of review criteria is what they're going to look like. And to avoid kind of the proliferation of these utility poles, the first thing they're required to do is look at existing utility poles and see if they can co-locate on a utility pole or an existing traffic signal pole. So something that would just add to that and, and meet their needs, but also not add another pole. So that, that's what that looks like. There's kind of a hierarchy of different options, but the, the last option is for them to install a new pole because we're sensitive to the impact these, proliferation of these just has on the visual aesthetics of, of our community. So that's our regulatory environment in a, in a nutshell. They are limited to the maximum height in the zoning district. So in the case of most of our residential districts, which would be Mr. Burnett's property, of course, that's a 35-foot maximum, so that there is that height limitation in place. As it pertains to this particular location on, on 33rd, you know, what I know, and this came up on Friday, but is that the city did issue a right, right-of-way permit through the Public Works Department to allow a contractor of some sort to do underground, as I understand it, potholing or utility investigation. Typically, that's a precursor of, of someone wanting to, you know, install some sort of utility, whether that be a, an underground facility, it could be a utility box, it could be a small cell. We don't know. We weren't provided that information, and we have not been contacted by any provider at this location with a desire to locate a pole in this location. So we haven't had those conversations with any of the actual telecommunications providers. It could be that one is lurking out there and an application may be made. If so, we start that conversation with the provider as to the story that I just told you, right? Which is first, they need to tell us why they're. Second, we need to, if, if they can justify the location, we need to see, you know, what would be the best type of pole to go in that location based on that hierarchy of different poles that are outlined in, in chapter 26. That's what I know. I don't know, Jerry, if you've got anything to add from a legal standpoint?
That's a really, a good, complete description. The only two things I would add relate to the federal and state preemption that Ken mentioned. And typically, we are ready to use zoning to allow facilities in or not in a given zone district. And one of the preemptive effects of legislation has been to allow these facilities in all zone districts as used by right, which is sort of federal and state zoning imposed upon cities. And that's very different than what we're used to doing in terms of regulating facilities. But that is, as Ken has pointed out, that's the effect of good lobbying, I guess, or lobbying, intense lobbying by the industry. And that is the, the, the rule we have to follow, such that, that you can't use zoning per se to say, not in R1 at all. That's usually a tool that we can use for other kinds of uses. It's not available to the city here. And as well, there's a compulsion to be able to make your rights of way available within the other constraints described. But again, you're the owner of the rights of way, but they are considered to be available for these facilities as a result of legislation. And, and while that just says, here's what areas are available, then of course you have to go through the process that Ken is describing, but there are limitations again on the city's ability to, to exclude. And those are pretty significant limitations that wouldn't be true for And those are pretty significant limitations that wouldn't be true for other kinds of uses.
And Jerry, I appreciate you bringing that up. I failed to kind of maybe say, state that as affirmatively, but I just want to say it again, right? Because what, they, they, they've done two things, right? In, in the legislation, they've said, "It's a use-by-right in all zoning districts." That's item number one. Item number two is, we are compelled as a city and a controller of rights-of-way and easements. If we hold any easements or rights-of-way unless we have some reason to tell someone that they can't locate there because, you know, there's too many other utilities already going on, that would certainly be reasonable. But the, the presumption is that we need to make our rights-of-way available for these facilities.
Ms. Hoppe?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Johnstone, in that process, when they, when they come and ask for the permit and they say, "Okay, in this specific spot, we will have 99.9% of, of the connectivity that we want," and, and can we then tell them, "Well, we, we understand that it might bring you down to like 95%, but we want you to move it 10 feet this way," or like, can we tell them to, to move it or adjust it, you know? I mean, obviously, they can't put it right in the middle of someone's driveway, but can they put it like right on the corner so that it maybe is a, you can't see as you're coming onto your driveway, or, you know, can we tell them to adjust it a little bit in any way?
We can, and we, we do control that kind of micro-location, right? I mean, if they come in and justify that they need one in this general vicinity, you know, it, it would be presumptive to say, "Well, we've got a better site for you that's maybe two blocks away," or something like that. But at a fairly granular level, we can do that, and we have. In front of Louise Turner Park on 38th Avenue, there was a proposed pole in that general location. We, we saw an opportunity to create a light pole, and I'm not even sure if this has been built yet, so, to create a light pole that would provide illumination for a bus stop that's fairly frequently used. So that, we, we can do those types of things, and we do.
And, and can we, can we require them to put it in like, like maybe a sculpture, or, you know, like if it was, you know, like, like by the park or whatever, if there was no need for a light pole, could we require them to put it in a, in a sculpture or something and add the sculpture to the park and then?
That's not an option that we've considered, but I, I think it would be an option. The, the, the goal is to minimize the visual impact, and, and that's clear in the ordinance.
And, and can you, can you think of, you know, when we, I'm trying to think of when we reviewed that ordinance, but can you think of any opportunities that we perhaps missed in that ordinance that, that you think that we could potentially review to be able to mitigate a high impact in our, in our neighborhoods and on our, on our streets, knowing that we can't say that we can remove specific zones, knowing that we have to allow cer-, certain right-of-ways? But are there any opportunities that we missed in, in that code change?
Yeah, not, not off the top of my head, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't preclude some option that, that could be added to it. We'd have to do it with Jerry's help, right, to make sure that we're not overstepping our, our legal bounds. But could there be additional language that would further encourage them or discourage them in some locations and encourage them in other locations? There could be some additional language. I'd have to explore that with my team as well, who, you know, are more in the weeds in implementing these actual applications.
And when we made the hierarchy of, of what they have to, like utilizing, utility poles are already there, being part of the hierarchy, did we make in that hierarchy, commercial areas being more of a, a desirable place for, for the antennas or
We, we-
busier streets, not necessarily cul-de-sacs? Like, did, is any of that kind of in a hierarchy?
We, we didn't, and again, I'd have to explore that with Jerry whether we could, because it was, again, it's very explicit and saying, "You can't preclude these in residential districts," right? I mean, that's-
Sure.
That was essentially the intent of that, right? Which is to say that the industry has convinced us, and I think it's probably true, that the, the way this technology works, they can't be precluded from residential districts and deliver the product. So, you know, I think we'd have to be really careful whether we could explore language like that that could, you know, be perceived to not be consistent with the state law.
Thank you.
Any additional, Ms. Noslerbeck?
So with this specific instance, there's been the, the work that's happened, but there hasn't actually been an application pulled yet?
Right, so the first-
I, I just want to make sure I'm understanding that correctly.
Yeah, so two, two things should happen before they would apply for eventually a right-of-way permit. So ultimately, when these are going to be installed in our right-of-way or in a, an easement that we control, they need to get what's called a right-of-way permit from the Public Works Department. Prior to doing that, they need to work with the planning and zoning department to determine all those other things, so compliance with Chapter 26. And then the next thing that we do, and it's also in the community development department, is we assign an address. And so until those two things happen, they can't get that right-of-way permit. So this site in particular, while some underground work has occurred with a proper right-of-way permit, they couldn't come in and just simply, you know, pull a right-of-way permit tomorrow for a small cell facility.
So if I'm, I was just kind of like writing down the process, because I didn't review this ordinance before we came in tonight, because I wasn't thinking about that. But we need to, the city would need to justify the location, and is there any, is there any space in there for the residents? It's sounding like because this is the FCC that we're in a situation where we don't really have a lot of say because of the state and federal preemption, but is there a way to be notifying the neighborhood or, you know, especially if it is in residential? I know that might mean, like, reevaluating the, the ordinance, but where is there an opportunity for residents to know that this is going to be happening to them? And if there is any action that they can take or at least be educated about what's going on, is there anything that we can do?
Well, I, I wouldn't say that there's nothing you could do. There probably is something you can do. I would, I would be cautious in pursuing that, because I think you may be, it, it's kind of like the discussions that we've had over the years on notice for things like subdivision plots and the merits of expanding notice for a process that's very administrative in its nature. So you'd be engaging a neighborhood in, and, and Mr. Burnett is not, you know, unique in being concerned about these, right? I mean, that's why the state got involved. So I think you'd be, you'd be informing the neighborhood about a, a pending and, and then telling them, "And it's going to go in," right? So it would just be a, I don't know, in my mind, a, a little bit disingenuous to notify the neighborhood, thinking they're going to have an influence in a process that they're likely not going to have an influence on.
Well, I, I think that I just disagree a little bit, that at least there's an opportunity for education in the process, so that if there is an opportunity for residents to be a, like at least feel like they have a voice in their neighborhood, then they at least would be notified of what's, of what's happening. Because the way that it's, it's coming across right now is that this, that this, if you, you have a right-of-way near you, then next thing you know, you could have a tower where you didn't before. And I, I just think that there's no, no notification happening.
You're absolutely right, and I, I mean, I get that. I just, you know, we don't, we don't typically do a, a property owner or some sort of a, a notice for other right-of-way work, right? So it, it, it would be, we'd be carving it off for one specific type of activity happening in the right-of-way whereby, you know, we don't require that for any other utility providers such as-
I guess my, I get, I'm so sorry to cut you off, Ken. I just might, I guess my question or what's different about this to me is that this is like federal FCC stuff in the, in the right-of-way versus some of the other stuff that we do in right-of-way. Does that, I don't know, maybe Jerry, you're looking at me like, "That doesn't make any sense," but I'm just saying that like, this, this is a pretty huge imposition in some of these right-of-ways that has a lot of state and federal preemption to it, that some of the other work that's happening in right-of-ways doesn't necessarily have. And so we, as a city, might not need to notify people of some of the things that are happening in right-of-ways because it doesn't have that big of an impact, but the things that are coming at this level, I just, I, I just want to, in the same spirit of communicating with our residents about what's going on, just think that notifying could be helpful.
Well, it's a social policy call for the council to, to, were you to wish to create some, some neighbor notification provisions? The concern, of course, is accurately expressed by Ken, is that typically where we have notification, it means that there's going to be a hearing and that there's room for a different decision based upon the public comment. And the truth is that you can have that public comment, but there isn't room for a different decision, and that creates a real disparity between the expectation and what is produced. And while you have the right to have the notification, the, the impact of that is not the same as usual, and that, you know, creates a real disparity in terms of expectations. But it's a social policy call for you to allow that disparity and, and provide for it and then have to kind of account for it. But I think we all understand that dynamic. I'm not saying you can't do notification. I think Ken isn't saying that either. But it's what is going to be the outcome of that and what can people reasonably anticipate or expect, and the failure of expectation could be a real problem.
Thanks. I, I don't want to belabor this too much further, but Ken and Jerry, those are both really helpful explanations. I'll maybe talk to some of the other counselors about that. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. I have Mr. Stites, Ms. Hoppe, Ms. Hutchinson, Mr. Ohm, and Ms. Hulteen, in that order.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll just keep it real quick.
Okay.
Do we have other notifications for right-of-ways for Excel or the phone, the actual phone company or anybody like that that we would need? I'm just, I mean, to Ms. Noslerbeck's point, I'm worried about carving out this and then Excel wants to come in and build a tower, ground the lines or something like that, and then that's a whole nother, you know, conversation as well, that maybe we are starting to give notice to everybody for everything, and there's not a whole lot, there's not a whole lot of, just neighborhood say as far as Excel lines or anything like that goes, correct?
That, that's my understanding, yeah. I think we, in some cases, if it's going to be a, you know, larger right-of-way project or a, you know, a major utility project, like replacing a water line over several thousand feet or something like that, we certainly, and if it were our project, we would do some sort of a notification so that, like Wadsworth, right? We're letting people know about that project. And we'd encourage utility providers like a, a water or sewer district to do that for those, those bigger magnitude and longer duration projects.
And I, I noticed, there's one on Balsam, right? 32nd and Balsam, I think, somewhere right over there. We had some neighbors complain about that one. Once it's actually in and it's painted black, you don't quite notice it as much as, as you do once it's, like while it's being built, but once it's in, you don't?
Yeah, that's the hope. I mean, they're, they're certainly, they're generally, you know, bulkier in terms of their, their dimensions than a typical utility pole, so they, I guess, stick out in that, in that way. One of the requirements in our, in our code language is that they be painted whatever color is predominant in that area in terms of utility infrastructure.
Thank you.
And Ms. Hoppe?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I'll try to be very fast, too. I appreciate Attorney Dahl's explanation, and, and I just want to be really clear that, that everybody understands that city staff, they follow the direction that we give them as council, right? And so if the direction as council is, is what we've put into the Chapter 26, that's the direction they follow. So that's, that's not, it's not just that the, the staff is, is just not doing, not listening, it's that they're, they're listening to what they're supposed to be listening to, which is code. And so what I hear is that there, there might be some small opportunities for some tweaks in, in, in our code when it comes to this small cell. And, and, and some of those opportunities is that trying to make sure that there is an emphasis on the fa, on, on the, on the fact that we want this to be on a neighborhood street, in the middle of the street, as a very last result. And saying that we can't deny it, but that that's, will be the very, our very last choice. And so maybe we just need to take a little bit of a look at the language and try to strengthen that up as legally as we can, and then, and just, you know, keeping in mind that if there are changes that we want to make to the process, then those, then those are things that we have to tell staff. They can't just unilaterally decide they're going to make those changes.
Thank you, Ms. Hutchinson.
Thank you, Mayor. When did this ordinance go through?
It was created early, all right.
Well, that's before a lot of us. And it, it also does seem that the company is not working above board. So for them to just come in and do whatever they want, the city didn't even know they were doing this. So that is an issue. But yet, also, the city can say to the company, "No, we don't want that location, but it's not a good location, but we could put it, you could put it over here." So if you can say that, then why can't it be like where the traffic lights are or a thousand feet apart, you know, instead of just like tch, 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 in front of people's houses? Because there is a, a concern about the noise that these devices give off, and it's up in the air about any radiation or anything. They're saying, "Oh, there's no problem." Yeah, we get stuff from cell phones. So when people have invested in their homes and things, maybe at night, they don't want to hear this thing going off. It sounds like a car running, which it does downtown. So I think it's important for us to be able to have an amendment on this, to kind of make it to where, if it's not a suitable place, like in the neighborhood, but yet the city can say, "You could move it, we could move it over here," or whatever, then why not? How come the city can say it's okay to move it, but yet you're saying we can't do anything because it's federal or state?
Well, there's parameters around that, Ms. Hutchinson, that we, the city has some, I think Mr. Johnstone clarified or spoke to very clearly, that we have some regulation on, maybe on a location where it can be, but we can't, we can't say it can't be in a residential district, and that's a federal law. And, but yeah, maybe, maybe it doesn't have to be right in front of this house.
Yeah.
And we don't know where they're going to place it at this point. The city doesn't know, because as Ken Johnson mentioned, the only thing that we have in front of us right now is a right-of-way permit to do potholing. We don't know if they're going to put a cell tower in. So we have to go through the process, but then when we go through the process, we can work with them and, and hopefully we can adjust it so it doesn't have an impact on this residential neighborhood.
How come they're not going through the process?
Well, it's not started yet. They, they'll have to go through the process. They haven't applied for a permit yet.
Yeah, but they've been digging.
They've got a right-of-way permit for that. Anybody can get a right-of-way permit and, and locate utilities within a right-of-way, and they're, they are going through the process to do that, but that's all they can do right now. If they want to locate a cell tower, they're going to have to go through the steps that Mr. Johnstone mentioned. They haven't started that, they haven't applied for a permit yet.
Well, most everything in Wheat Ridge is residential, except for the main drags or, or whatever, so, you know, like Wadsworth, Kipling, things like that. But I have seen these where they are on traffic lights or, you know, light poles or something like that.
Sure, that's ideal, but the whole intent, I'm not saying I agree with this necessarily, is to provide coverage across the whole community, and that's why they want to place some of these in residential neighborhoods, because some residential neighborhoods are not adjacent to a commercial corridor, and they don't have as good service. That's why they're doing this.
Well, I, I just think that city council should update this a little bit for- Well, I, I just think that city council should update this a little bit for whatever we can do. I mean, we have people who live here and, you know, I'm, great, the federal government and the state and all that kind of stuff, but we also have citizens who live here who are concerned for their safety, also noise level and things. So, you know, I think we should work on this.
We understand that, and, and we'll look at it and bring back what we can, but again, this is, this is federal law, and we have to, we're not going to give you advice to violate federal law. That's your decision. I guess if you want to do that, I don't think Mr. Dahl is going to recommend that, but we'll look at what we can do within federal law to make this less onerous on our neighborhoods. And we can definitely bring that back.
And, and sure, let's remember that when this ordinance was adopted, it was largely state-of-the-art at the time. We did quite a bit of outreach to other local governments here in Colorado. There's a coalition, and I was able to obtain lots of example ordinances, and, and we were able to get the best we could from those. And as, as usual, you pick the best things from several different sources and you put them all in your, in your ordinance, and that was in 2017. So we were pretty much state-of-the-art at that time. No question that the art changes, especially in this fast-moving arena, and there, I'm sure have been some refinements, is maybe the best way to say it, uh, to this regulatory pattern in the intervening four years. Those refinements won't result in, because the federal and state laws haven't been changed, won't result in, okay, now you can prohibit in residential neighborhoods or on residential streets. But there may well have been refinements and techniques around design and location within, as has been said a number of times, the granular level here, and we're pleased to look at what has happened in those intervening four years and see what refinements we can suggest to you. Happy to do that.
All right. Mr. Ohm?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I've noticed in my neighborhood that Excel has been replacing the poles, and the poles in my neighborhood are actually, I don't know, approximately 10 to 15 foot taller. And so my question is, is, um, uh, I guess if, if the cell towers, you know, if they can't agree with, and my thought was, you know, why would Excel, you know, my neighborhood was built, you know, my house is built in '57, if, um, if they're adding all that height to it, I'm guessing that, my opinion is that that must be for some type of future cohabitation of other, maybe a cell tower or something on top of that. But if the, uh, if the cell tower people can't reach an agreement, you know, I guess by law, then it'd be easier for them just to put in their own pole in the right-of-way in the, typically the right-of-ways were not installing vertical structures, it's typically horizontal. Um, and so it is a little bit different that they're proposing a 35-foot tall. And then if we're looking at that 35-foot tall, I mean, this only solves one issue, but if we're looking at 35-foot tall height based on the code, could we not maybe apply a, some type of like front yard setback so at least, you know, these poles aren't just popping up in a front yard and that we're, we're trying to really kind of, I'll say, I won't say control, but manage that they get put in, in my specific instance, in the backyard where there already is existing power poles, and now we're, we're not just, you know, the, the lowest hanging fruit is to just, well, let's just put it in this front yard because that's right-of-way and we have rights for that. And I know that there is some checks and balances, but I'm just wondering if there's some type of language that we could add to the planning code to prohibit, um, or apply that same front yard setback, just, you know, because you couldn't put a house, and, and the majority of the residential is what I'm talking about, not new residential, but there, there's usually like a front yard setback.
Yeah, we'll, we'll add that to the list, see if that's something we can tweak. Thank you. Carlos, Ken has something to say to that now?
Well, good. Ms. Hulteen?
Thank you, I'll keep this short. Given our constraints we have around our ability to regulate specific locations and to do notifications, can the city do some sort of just community outreach, either through connections or just to inform them, remind them of this as a condition citywide around how utilities or FCC, can we do some sort of information process on this just so that all citizens are at least exposed whether they pick it up and read it or not, but can we include some sort of information on that?
Sure, yeah, we can do another round. I believe we did that when this first came out in 17, but we can, we can hit, hit the presses and all of our social media and get some more information out about what this means. Yep.
Yeah, I think that would be helpful because it's, it's been a century since then because we had a pandemic, and everyone's kind of forgotten what life was like before 2020, so that would be really great to include that.
Thank you. Mr. Johnstone, do you know what the extent of the proliferation of these devices might look like in our city?
Uh, I don't. I mean, I think we've had, um, maybe five to 10 different providers come in, most with, you know, a series of, you know, two, three, four different locations to build out their network. Um, so that's as rough a numbers as I could put to it.
Okay.
And I think the, you know, the understanding is that the, the need will continue to, to, to grow because it's a, it's a data capacity issue for these providers. This is how they deliver data over all of our devices, you know, in a reasonably expedient manner.
Okay, thank you very much. Ms. Noslerbeck, and we're going to.
Um, just on that, on that same question, so with these towers, can like CenturyLink share with T-Mobile or with other providers? Is it just one provider per tower, or is it something that they like share resources with?
Uh, like, like we do for all of our telecommunications, um, applications for just regular cell towers, for instance, we encourage co-location, that's what we call that. Yes.
Thank you. We'll go to city attorney's matters. Mr. Dahl?
Nothing tonight, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Uh, we'll go to elected officials' matters and start with our clerk, Mr. Kirkpatrick.
All of you who were sworn in this evening, please stop by and sign your oaths of office. There will be two copies. This nice gilded copy you can take with you. This one I need to get back with your signature on it so, because we are required by statute to file this with the county and the Secretary of State. So please don't walk out of here tonight without doing it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And those are available tonight for signature?
Yeah.
Good. Okay, uh, we'll go to elected officials' matters. Ms. Noslerbeck?
Thanks, Mayor. Um, I wanted to congratulate everybody, um, that's on council and who won their elections this go-round. A special welcome to Councilor Ohm. Um, it's great to have you up here, and I look forward to working with you. Um, I wanted to take a moment and just thank, um, Councilor Hoppe for, um, her leadership and, um, understanding and her, um, her ability to really take, um, a lot of councilors through the process of how this whole body works. And I couldn't have gotten through the past couple of years without your leadership as Mayor Pro Tem. And, um, you, I called you earlier today to tell you this, but you are a treasure to this city and to this county and to this state and to this country for the kind of service that you, um, give every day. So thank you so much. I wanted to also just, um, take a quick minute and let folks know about, um, Wheat Ridge Neighborhood Schools thing that's going on. Um, there is a family learning series that is, um, happening at a bunch of different schools throughout, um, the city, but, um, on November 15th, so we all can't go because we'll be in council or we'll be in study session, but there's Healthy Minds Night. Um, it's a family learning series, um, and that's going to be at Wilmer Davis. Um, and it sounds really amazing, especially during this time of COVID. Um, we have, um, a presentation on self-care in the form of gratitude, cozy corner creations, and Healthy Minds navigating supports with, um, different educators from the school. So sounds like a really great opportunity, and they're inviting, um, the community to join as well as families from the neighborhood schools, so thanks.
Thank you very much. Ms. Hutchinson?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I have a couple things. Um, I am very happy that Wheat Ridge Lanes is going to continue to be Wheat Ridge Lanes. My girls took, were on a bowling team there for several years on Saturday mornings, and it was, um, a great thing. And I'm, and the person who has purchased it is wanting to keep it as it is, okay? Maybe expand the patio or whatever, but that's great. Number two is, um, there is a vacancy in District One on the Planning Commission, and I encourage people to please apply to this position so we have representation from District One. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Dozeman?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Uh, I'd just like to take a quick moment to thank all of the residents in District Four for entrusting me to serve another four years. It's truly an honor and a privilege to be sitting up here, um, and I'm, I'm excited for this opportunity. Uh, and I also wanted to congratulate all of those that won their reelection and welcome Scott, um, and echo what Councilmember Noslerbeck said. Ms. Hoppe, you have been a wonderful leader and ushered in many councilmembers and shown us all the ropes, and we thank you for your long tenured services, Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you. Mr. Ohm?
Thank you. There's a recent opening in District Two Planning Commission, and if anybody's interested in chatting with me, um, I'd be more than happy to explain the duties. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Hulteen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a handful of things. First, I would like to welcome, uh, Councilmember Ohm, uh, welcome to District Two. I'm looking forward to serving with you. And I thanked her before, but I can never thank her enough. Uh, Ms. Hoppe, you have been extraordinary and inspiring and tireless in your service as Mayor Pro Tem, so I will be coasting in the wake of that as long as I can, so thank you. Um, I have been chatting with our Sustainability Director, uh, Program Manager Kayla about the Sustainable Wheat Ridge Committee, and we've been in discussions about appointing a council member to that committee. Um, I think it would be in great service to sort of integrate those conversations a little bit. So I am seeking consensus tonight to create that position on the committee. We will not be appointing anyone tonight. What we would be doing is creating, creating the position, and then if you are interested in serving in that capacity, uh, if you would please email Mary Ann by the end of the week, let her know you're interested, and maybe just a couple things about what you think you could bring to it. And then council as a body, we can figure out who, who, who has self-nominated would be the best representative. So, uh, do I have a consensus to create, um, that position in the Sustainable Wheat Ridge Committee? Wonderful. I will let Kayla and Mary Ann know that's moving forward. And then I have a question for you, Mr. Goff. Uh, I was really excited on Friday night that the, um, infrastructure bill passed, and I am just curious if, uh, we had any success getting Wadsworth squeaked through that bad boy?
Unfortunately, no, it did not make the final bill. Um, we, we are double-checking to see if, for some reason, it got added at the last second, but I don't think it did. We were told it, it wasn't in the, unfortunately, in the bill. But, um, the good news is there's going to be many new grant opportunities in, in this funding that the Wadsworth Project could be eligible for. So we're, we're, we have a email into Congressman Pearl Mutter's office right now asking on that question.
Great, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Weaver?
Thank you. I want to echo all of the congratulations and thank you to Ms. Hoppe for all your help. And I also just wanted to thank, um, Wheat Ridge and District Three, um, and everyone in Wheat Ridge for getting out and voting. I, I just, I think it's a great process when everybody gets out and participates, so thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Stites?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will also join. Um, congratulations to everybody who won the other night, um, well-deserved, and congratulations to Ms. Weaver, looking forward to working with you again for the next couple of years. Um, and Ms. Hoppe, thank you again for all the work you've done as Mayor Pro Tem. I know, um, I know a lot more about this process because of, of your educational process that you, you put us through, and, um, I, I think we were all able to hit the ground running, so thank you very much. Um, and thank you to Zach Urban again for all of his, his years of service. And if you could find it, find it and buy it in Wheat Ridge. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Hoppe?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you to everybody for your kind words. I really appreciate those. Um, again, I just want to say one more time, thank you to Councilmember Urban. Uh, his, um, his leadership will, um, in discussions on the dais will be missed, but I look forward to working with Mr. Ohm, and congratulations, Mr. Ohm and Ms. Weaver and the rest of us, for Leah and the mayor and myself for being reelected. And, um, I just want to say that I, I appreciate all of, all of the discussions that we have on all of these items, and, um, and I, and I appreciate Mr. Johnstone and Mr. Dahl going into that deeper dive on the 5G towers for us, so thanks.
Thank you. I'd like to, uh, to express my thanks to Councilman Urban for his faithful service to our community. He was a, he was a good councilman. He, he showed up, he read his package, and he, he did good work on that. So thank you very much, Zach. Uh, I'd like to thank the voters of Wheat Ridge who participated in the election. It's part of our civic duty, and I want to thank you for casting your ballots because it's an important thing in our democracy. Uh, congratulations to the councilors that, uh, that were reelected to their positions. Uh, congratulations, Mr. Ohm, for, for being elected as a new councilor, and welcome. We look forward to working together. Uh, I'd like to thank Ms. Hoppe for her work as a Mayor Pro Tem. You've done an outstanding job, and I want to thank Ms. Hulteen or congratulate Ms. Hulteen on, on being elected to Mayor Pro Tem. I look forward to working with you. Thank you so much. We have, uh, we have moved out of daylight savings time, so it's darker earlier. We have more young, young children out in our neighborhoods because we still have, uh, we still have a lot of great weather. So I hope everyone will really be careful as you drive around through our city. Please drive slow, take it easy, watch where you're going, and be safe out there. There's no more business to come before our council. We will stand adjourned. Good night.